Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October fourteenth. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorneys, city planner, city engineer, all council members are present along with our assistant city administrator and our city administrator? At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium and state your name and address and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? This is for the open, if you're here for one of the public hearing items?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, we will allow you to speak at that time. All right. Anyone here for open forum? All right, then we will close the open forum and move up to consider item two for our agenda approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? I am asking to, I have a question on item three point four. There is a duplicate, so we can just pull that down to item six point one, please. Anyone else have anything? Otherwise, a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one under our public hearing, this is an assessment for the 2024 street renewal project. I will turn this over to our city engineer and our city administrator. Who's going first?
City engineer, ready. Thank you, Mayor. This is the 2024 street renewal project. We've been doing these for about ten years. The project location for this year was Basser Oak Grove, third and fourth, with one separate PID parcel. There are sixty-five parcels in that area. This is south of Eighty-Fifth Street. And then there's the other area is Hall's first, second, and third addition, which is east of OD, north of Eighty-Fifth, and south of County State Highway thirty-nine. And there are eighty-one parcels in that project location. So prior to the project, we went out and every year, the state staff reviews the same streets and determines a PCI or a payment condition index. And the areas in these, these two locations were the worst in the city, which required the street renewal project to bring them back up to a much better street. So Basser Oak Grove was a PCI level of forty-five and Hall's addition, first, second, third, was a PCI of fifty-four. Anything below that sixty range is getting to be a pretty poor street and like to go in and renew that street so that it can go on for another forty years. The last time that work was done on these was the nineteen ninety-nine overlays, which was twenty-five years ago. And they not quite the same street renewal process that we did on this one. So then the next one shows the streets as they were prior to the project. And you can see the amount of degradation that's been done to them over that time period. There's quite a few cracks, lock cracking, alligator cracking, a lot of patches that the city crews have done for that time period. The next slide shows what the improvements were for Basser Oak Grove's third and fourth. Due to the width of the road, we tried to keep the road the same width because if we build it and we build it up here, the slopes would have gotten steeper. So we removed some of the material in order to match the slopes and the driveways. So we did a full depth reclamation, which means we grinded up the pavement with the gravel below it. We removed three and a half inches of that to make room for the three and a half inches of new material. Rebuilt it to the twenty feet wide that it was before, matched the driveways, replaced any centerline culverts. Those were metal culverts. They were replaced with concrete culverts. And they sharpened and compact that reclaimed material. And then they placed two lifts for a total of three and a half inches of asphalt. And then they redo the shouldering with some of the reclaimed material that came off the street and redo again, any of the driveways to match into that road. So for the other project, it's a little, the slopes aren't as nearly as bad. So we were able to keep the material within the road, add some strength to the road. So we again did a full depth reclamation, replaced any of the centerline culverts, rebuilt that road to twenty-four feet wide, shaped compacted those reclaimed material. The roads elevation did increase three to four inches, but we matched the driveways to that and the slopes to that. And then placed that three and a half inches of material, two lifts, and then shoulder with reclaimed material. And in the last week or so, in some areas, they've brought in topsoil to go over the areas that the shoulders were a little wider than we would like so that they could grow grass up close to the street, but not directly against the street. We like that reclaimed material. It holds the edge of the pavement so it doesn't break off when vehicles errantly drive a little bit off the road or they're parking off the street. And just hold it in case there's, you know, the school buses and heavier equipment like the snowplows and the garbage trucks. If we don't have that shoulder there to hold the edge, you will have break off occur and then worse, the road degrades. So after the project, we have some photos here. These first two, I believe, are the first three here are all of Basser Oak Grove Estates with the new road in place and the shoulder material on either side. And then these three photos, I'm pretty sure are of Hall's addition. You can see the roads a little wider. The slopes on the ditches are not quite as steep. And you can see the shouldering material on the edges. So for the proposed assessment, it goes up to twenty percent of the total, total project cost up to a thousand ninety-two dollars for each lot. So because in this assessment, our, our, this project, our bid was a million fifty-seven thousand. Twenty percent of that is two hundred and eleven thousand. You take the two hundred and eleven thousand divided by the hundred and forty-six thousand, it was fourteen hundred forty-nine dollars. And that's greater than the maximum. So the maximum of one thousand ninety-two was used as the proposed assessment. And the assessment rule, I believe, is in your packets if you would like to look at them. And if we looked at this through a ten-year assessment rate at four point four, which is what the city can get bonds for. And so it would be hundred and sixty-seven dollars a year and reduced to a hundred and fourteen through the ten-year assessment rate. Or these parcels can come in and pay, I think it's before November, something to make sure it gets off of their tax roll for next year.
Yeah, Mayor, council residents can pay in full or partially pay, assuming the council adopts the assessment before November fifteenth. And each year thereafter, before November fifteenth. And we do send a letter to each property that receive an assessment if this were adopted.
So we're conducting the public hearing here in the next few minutes. And then after that, council will consider resolution, adopting that assessment or not.
I'm going to end my slide, so. That's the presentation. So yeah, that's the people that council.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing. This is the portion where you can come to the podium, state your name and address and limit comments regarding the 2024 street renewal project. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay.
So my name is Bryce Abel. I've lived out here forty years. Okay, I was born, raised here. I actually bought my childhood home. For years, we've had problems with plow trucks, everything else backing into my driveway because I live on the corner of Eightieth and Needham. We've warned everybody. We've talked to the city, everything else. Now, during this road renewal process, as you guys call it, damage was done to my driveway. And as I believe it was you that just said that you did the, your due diligence or whatever. And I'm not knocking on you. It's, I'm just irritated at the situation. I'm not taking out on you. I apologize if that's what it looks like, okay? Before any of this start. So you did your due diligence or whatever to make sure that the road was pretty much level and everything was easy in like it was before, which my driveway was even with the road, okay? Well, I've got a giant hole in the bottom of my driveway. Because once again, graders and smooth roller drums and dump trucks loaded with everything else backing into my driveway and destroying my driveway, okay? So now, on top of that, I gotta pay a couple hun- or a couple thousand dollars or whatever for this road that didn't need to be replaced in the first place because my road wasn't that bad. It's been sealed multiple times, everything else. There was none of those pictures showed anything with my road where there, there's a crack maybe, maybe every fifty feet at best. So I want to know who's going to pay for my driveway if I gotta pay that two thousand dollars to fix some road that didn't need to be fixed. And I want to know who gave the authority to tell me that I can't go to my house or leave my house while they were working on that project? Because I work fourteen hours a day. When I come home, I don't want to sit on Eighty-Fifth and wait for an hour to get to my house. I paid good money for my house. This is a major issue. And it wasn't just one time, it was multiple times. And I admit, you guys probably heard about it from Knife River because I I don't put up with that crap. I drove straight down their brand-new road. I didn't give a shit. I worked fourteen hours. And then they were telling me I couldn't go home? This is ridiculous. And I'm not the only one. I've got multiple neighbors that complained to the same thing. I had one neighbor that actually sat on the side of Eighty-Fifth for two hours because they wouldn't let them. And they're an elderly neighbor. They're over sixty years old. And I know for a fact they got health problems. And they wouldn't even let them go home? This is a big issue. And if this is a company that you guys are going to have do your roads, you can stop at my property line and you can skip my shit. When the road gets that bad, I'll pay to have it done or I'll bring somebody in to do it. I don't ever want this shit to go on again. This is ridiculous. They had both Oakwood and Needham completely blocked off.
Ron, comments about the driveway?
Um, I didn't hear anything about a driveway being used as construction turnaround.
I've, I actually talked to the Knife River guy. Because I, after I drove through, down through the ditch and around their machines that they had blocking the driveway or the road, their Knife River pickup, which I believe was the foreman on the job, was parked directly in the middle of my driveway. Multiple times. And I did give him the okay to park his pickup on the side or even in my ditch. And asked him very politely multiple times. And then after I would leave for work and my truck wasn't there, my wife would go to leave to go pick up my daughter from school because she's sick and everything else. And she couldn't get out of the damn driveway. She had to drive down through my front yard, up onto the ditch, or through the ditch, onto the road to get out because they're blocking her in. And I worked for a toll company. I mean, I toll for Knife River all the time. A lot of the guys are super nice, whatever, but it's, this is, there's a certain crews or whatever that they, they're ridiculous. And it happens with every company. I understand that. But the only way to stop that kind of crap from happening is for somebody from the city to be out there monitoring, which I toll for a living. I'm going through all these construction areas on the daily. I work with the sheriffs all the time. I'm in and out of every different neighborhood in the surrounding area. And there's no city members, no, nobody regulating anything. It's just the road crews.
Mayor, we, we did have a construction observer on the site. And we did send out letters with that information for that person to be either called me or called that person as the resident construction observer. I'm not sure if you received that letter, but there was a letter that did go out.
Yeah, the only letter I got
was this right here.
Which is the notice of the hearing on a proposed assessment. That's the only letter I got. I check that mailbox every day.
There was one that went out to all parcels or attempted to go to parcels describing the project timing and our construction observer's name and my name on the project.
And that phone numbers? That would have been what month that that went out?
Probably late July. A week or two before the project started.
Okay.
I think the project started August sixth and was done about a month or so after that.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't last long.
Yeah, it was probably towards the end, early September around Labor Day, the project was pretty much done except for some touch-up. What Mr. Abel might be describing is when they were actually doing paving, I assume, they would have held you.
Oh, no, they, they blocked it off when I, so I ride bike. Okay, I have a motorcycle ride or whatever. I'm friends with a bunch of MC clubs, everything else. So there's a bunch of different rides that I go on, okay? And we, I went to leave the Saturday that they started milling the road. They did the inside. And I went to pull out and the grader actually pulled over into the non, non-graded side and told me that I can't go that way. I said, okay, that's fine. I'll, you know, I'll turn around because I'm assuming that there was guys working, whatever. I, I'm a blue collar guy. I know how it goes, okay? So I went to turn around. He goes, no, you gotta go back to your house.
Yeah, the, the point that we've made with the contractor on this was that this is a, a U horseshoe style road system.
But they have to be able to get out.
Work on one side, everybody can get out.
Yep. And like I said, literally my driveway goes straight out of Eighty.
Yep.
And so I went to take a left, go out to Needham. They stopped, said, no, you can't go this way. Okay, cool, whatever. So pulled back, went to go the other way. He goes, no, they're both sides are closed off. You can't go down them. You can't, whatever. You're, give it an hour and a half. And I laughed at it.
If we had heard about, I mean, if I had heard about it, I would have made a phone call and made sure that they allowed access, you know, for all property owners. I can see ten, fifteen minutes while they're paving.
And see, that's fine. When you're telling me it's gonna be two hours, hour and a half. Yeah. So that's, yeah. And I got a bad temper. Like I, I was nice enough to warn you, whatever. I got a real bad temper. I don't put up with a lot of crap. I've had a lot of crap gone in my life. So I.
Well, there's nothing that we can do at this point.
No.
To go back.
But I need you to be aware.
Yes.
A close call doesn't get fed.
And it will be understood the next pre-con, any contractor that the city hires to breed and state. Exactly what we told them in this one, but we will explain the problems that we had.
Yep.
Access.
So now the issue of my driveway.
Yes.
I dropped down six inches into my driveway because they only put an apron about this long off the road.
And it created a hole, you said?
Yeah, and the whole center of my driveway is caving in. I've actually packed dirt in it to try to get rid of it because I've got, I've got two, three hundred thousand dollars in vehicles.
Well, we can review, so they have aerial photos that we can see
Yeah.
the cracks and damages to
Yep.
a driveway before and after, and we can look at.
Yeah, the only thing the aerial photos don't show is that my driveway is actually pushed down. And they, they wasn't just backing the back end into my driveway. Okay, it's their, their whole trucks were past my culvert. I've got a tree that basically is at where it's like, I think, a thirty feet from the center of the road. Because my old man is a dank and whatever. And that's where he planted the tree because he wanted to know where the city property ended and his property was. And they were past that tree.
Well, let's have myself come out and review it with you.
That's fine.
Have a discussion with
Yeah, I don't mind.
contractor.
Yeah.
If we state, but I can take also look at the, you know, there's being photos that you drive by and you can
Yeah.
look at the driveways prior to the project. And then we can look at what the project looks like after.
That's fine. That's fine.
Mr. Abel, did you sign in so Ron has your number?
I will, I will leave my name and number on the deal for you.
Okay.
And I'll just.
Ron will be the one.
Next to my name.
Ron will be the one that will be contacting you.
Fine, I'll put a little asterisk right in front of my name that way.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other, yes?
Hi, I'm Candace Johnson. I live on the corner of Eighty-Fifth and Over. If we've seen Ron before at our house. I just have a couple of questions on this assessment. First of all, question is, this interest fifty-eight thirty-two times at four point four percent. I'm not sure where that calculation came from because it should, I believe it should be forty-eight oh five, which is, you guys can figure that out, the math on it. If you take a look at that, please. The other thing is, what if you sell your house before two thousand thirty-four? Is there a lien on your house? Is there, how are you going to do this? Because are you expecting us to pay it in full, whenever we get ready to sell our home? Or are you saying you pass it on to the new owners? I mean, that's not very clear in this letter. The other thing is, it's not the amount of the money. I understand that money, that's not a big deal. But the other thing is, the question is, you, you're going to bill it out. How are you going to bill it? Are you just going to send a bill to the people and expect payment by such and such date? If not, you pay, you pay an interest on that. Things aren't very clear in here. This letter is a little bit clumsy for me. The reason being is that I like to know, how are you going to do this? And a lot of us don't get much mail anymore because we get email. We get, you know, text messages. That's a lot of us pay our bills that way. So that is spelled out here. And the other thing is, is that this comes out now. We got a letter sent from the construction company. They're going to come around, do our roads. And we understand that. Then comes this. Is this not the cart before the horse? I mean, why was it this said? We're talking about doing this. Maybe I missed something. Maybe ten months ago you were talking about it and I missed the minutes or something. But it's like after the fact, you're going to get a bill. And nobody said you're going to have a bill until we get this letter. And I just think that's a little bit remiss on the fact that all these people, and not just us, we've been here for twenty-seven years. So we're not new to the neighborhood. And only one more thing, and then I'll go sit out. When we asked to have flags put out where our sprinkler heads were, somebody brought those out. And they gave it to us.
From the construction company?
I believe it was a construction.
It was probably our construction observer, Andy handed them out to
Okay.
Yeah, after she requested, uh,
Yeah.
the flags.
Gary did, my husband. Well, then, when they took care of the road, but they buried them nine inches deep. So we had to call you again. My, and Gary spent the last week digging them up because we're having the system blown out because we have a sprinkling system. So we did that and it came and they, which they did a nice job. They put the new dirt on and they sprayed grass and whatever. But it just kind of was haphazard. It was not quite, not that we expect perfection because we've lived here a lot of years and a lot of things, you know, and it's a very good community for us. But I just think this is a little bit, needs more detail and explanation as to how do you do this? And what if you do sell your house? And the other thing is, is that maybe notifications like this should before we got the construction letter, could have been.
So those.
Can I?
Yeah.
My portion.
You do your portion and then stay there because he's going to answer your question.
Okay.
And he's going to ask.
System.
We're good now.
Know about that. And we were going to, we have an allowance within the project to repair anybody's sprinklers that may have changed elevation because the road changed elevation.
Yeah.
So if, if you've been in contact with Andy, our construction observer, he has your name down. If not, you can give me your name and number right now. And
Well, there's.
may not be able to be done this, this fall because the blowout has occurred. We don't want to re-energize your system to raise, so it would be something that would be completed.
But they've already been lifted.
They already moved.
Very good. Yeah, we did ourselves.
If you had your company do it and you have a cost, a, a bill, you can submit that to us and it'll come against the
So how about?
allowance within the project.
The owner of the house is my husband who did it.
Okay.
So does he submit the bill?
Unfortunately.
That might be a little more difficult.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying was
Yeah.
we took care of the problem.
Yep.
I, I just see that you know, it's like.
And then the other item that you brought up was a notice of the project. Did it have an assessment hearing? We did notify everyone on the project that there was an assessment hearing coming up. That was or excuse me, a public hearing. This is the assessment hearing. But there was a public hearing that was held back in, in March. And prior to that, we had a neighborhood meeting that was just an open house. And everybody could come and discuss the project with us without the rest of the council being here, more of a easier format for people to discuss.
Was anything set out in March or was it just?
Yeah, we sent out one letter for the open house and there was people that came and attended that. I think the mayor, you, did you attend that?
The one in March.
And then we had another assessment hearing with the full, or excuse me, public hearing, full council in March. And people attended that.
And we were gone in the month of March, so.
Okay.
That's.
So that may have just.
Hopefully summer warm.
Yeah.
And then.
We're winter Texans, is what we are.
Adam, administrator.
So Adam, can you explain the payment side of things? Okay.
And forgive me or correct me if I missed any of the things that you mentioned here, but the interest for twenty twenty-five, so the calculation actually includes the interest from the day of this meeting through the twenty-five, so that's maybe why I didn't calculate to the number that you would mention.
So October fourteenth?
October fourteenth through the end of twenty twenty-five. Notice that you get, it's very strict by Minnesota statute in terms of the language that we have to use in that property notice people of this hearing. That's why it doesn't read very well. We do follow up on the council approval of the assessment with a more layman's terms version of how you can pay that when those dates are, where to make that payment. In terms of if you do sell your house prior to this being paid off, that's usually something for the prospective buyer. Their title company will run a search on a property and identify any outstanding specimens. And then ultimately becomes a negotiation point between you, your buyer on influence of that. So it can continue on to the new homeowner in that situation if the two parties agree. So there's
So.
asks to be paid off at the time of sale. But that's usually a seller, a buyer negotiation.
So you're calling it assessment versus a lien? Because basically what you're saying is that it has to be satisfied before you can sell the house.
Uh, no.
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 You, you can choose to sell your house and the buyer that is purchasing your home
Right.
is liable to assume that.
And what if they're not?
Then it will re-property. Otherwise, you as the seller were then the. Otherwise, you as the seller were then the buyer.
Exactly. Exactly. So what you're saying is. If that buyer says, I'm not responsible for that because I wasn't living here when that took place. You are now responsible for that. And if you say, well, I'm not responsible for it either because I'm selling my house.
Oh, maybe a different way to put it. If it's not paid off at the time of sale, it remains with your parcel and it would be paid by the future owner.
Okay.
I think one of her other questions, Adam, was how does she pay it? It's with the taxes.
Correct. So if the council were to adopt this at the meeting tonight, at the end of November. City staff is sending this with all of the different properties. Uh, to Wright County, they will then insert it into their system and it will bill as a line item on your property tax statement.
Okay.
Each year. You won't actually get invoice from the city each year. It will be included on your property tax statement.
So how do we pay for twenty twenty-five?
Would pay Wright County, just like you would with your property tax.
What if we've already paid our property taxes, which is already October fifteenth, they're due tomorrow?
For twenty twenty-five.
Right.
You're asked.
Oh, for twenty twenty-five. This doesn't happen till twenty twenty-five.
Right, the first payment wouldn't be due until your twenty.
Okay, I misread it then. My apologies. Okay. All right, I guess sort of answer.
Look for another letter that will hopefully be a little.
Okay.
Where and how you pay it if you want to.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, thank you very much.
And are they able to, just for, for Mrs. Johnson, are they able to come here and pay? You talked about this different letter will be sent.
Yeah.
But.
If if people do choose to prepay and not have it be itemized on their property tax bill, do that at City Hall, just across the street. Ask for somebody in finance to receive that payment to give you a receipt for that.
Okay. So, so you could either not, either or. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comment?
Hey, Corey Thompson, I'm at a hundred and eighty ninth Street Northeast in Outsiago, there. Um, I've called, I think I talked to Ron a couple of weeks ago. My driveway has a really. I mean, it's like that. I'm almost scraping coming in the driveway because. Because that lift was so high. I'm almost at six inches of lift. On our side of the street because the ditch is so deep. And I I just put the driveway two years ago. And it was cut crooked. It, I got standing water in it. Every time I washed the car on Friday, it was puddle at the bottom of the driveway. So I have a hard enough time getting it entered when it was flat.
What, what's the address?
One four eight five one eighty ninth. And we we got a lot of that combat gravel. I mean, it's steep still. It's not even.
Is it a gravel driveway or the?
No, it's pavement. It's.
Payment, okay. So, you know, of course, it might be difficult to get the contractor back to get the. Uh, extend the driveway in the slope, the lesson. Uh, but I I'll have to give you a call and meet with you on site, Andy and I, and see. What can be done or needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I just put that driveway in a couple of years ago and I think, I don't know, but I think I talked to you because I said they lifted my driveway three inches above my greatest was, so.
It must be in Hall's Edition where they raised the.
Yeah, they raised it a lot there. It's.
Three and a half to four inches.
Yeah, I can, when they came by with the, I was, I was actually driving home when they were putting the gravel down. And it's very dirty gravel. There's a lot of big chunks in there. And I can't even mow up to the street right now because if I get anywhere near it, it's going in the lawnmower.
Yeah, that's the recycle material.
I I know, I know what it is.
You tried, yeah. Try to, um, you know, it's, it's, it's supposed to be pretty uniform, but of course it might.
Yeah, there's, there's big chunks of pavement and and nothing's going to ever grow on that stuff.
It's toxic. It's not intended to be.
I, oh, I know that, but I mean, the neighbors got weeds growing across the street. She had an immaculate lawn and now it's just full of weeds and. And I like said, I can't get my lawnmower up the ditch anymore to mow, so I can't get out on the street.
But we we are out there putting some topsoil down.
I see, I did see that.
Okay.
They stopped at our corner. So, but I mean, it's, it either it needs to be smooth or I'm going to do it myself. I mean.
All right, let's have Andy and I forget.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just want it to be, you know, I mean, every once in a while I got to drive through the ditch to get it started. I can't even do that, so.
Well, we've, you know, this, this is what this meeting is for is to come forward and let us know if there's some issues and then see if we can rectify it.
Did you leave your?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So, Ron, you have that on your list that you'll be going to Mr. Thompson's house?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Any other comments? All right, we will close the public hearing for this and bring this back up to council for discussion and possible adoption. Ron, it sounds like we've had some issues with people's driveways. Obviously, it's a concern, but. Following up with these residents needs to happen.
Correct.
And and it's also disappointing to hear that we are. Made aware now that people did not have access to their homes too, so. As you said, going forward in the future, we need to make sure that that's, and and I know this is a unique situation with that being a U-shaped road, but. They shouldn't be stuck in their homes.
Yeah, it, it's easier, of course, to take care of these items while the project is ongoing, but. We'll work with the contractor, take a look at the property owner's issues and see what we can do to rectify and hopefully yet this year.
All right. All right, also any other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yes, Ryan.
Um, there's a couple of properties on the list. I'd, I'd like to take a look at. I don't know what the easiest way to do that would be. Maybe if we want to pull up the map or something.
Okay.
Um, because, so, uh, reference number eight. I think council can see that that one is considered unassigned because that is a vacant property. Um, and I think in other parcels that we have that are indicated as vacant, we've excluded those from the assessment. I just want to make sure we're being consistent.
Mayor, uh, the other ones that were vacant were owned by the city. So they were then. Not assessed. This one is as a property owner and could be. Developed into a lot. I think that's a difficult lot to develop just because of the slope. And the amount of fill that would have to go in if if I recall that number eight property. I think it's the same owner as number seven.
It is, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
So I guess the council can look at it. Uh, as they please, but it is a separate lot owner of, you know, that of record. That has a building ability status at this point until. We determine that it isn't. It isn't a wetland, but it is a very difficult lot to build on.
So if I, if I look at the halls map, there's, there was one that was exempt because it was a tax forfeit. There's another was exempt because it's vacant, but I believe there's an owner on the vacant one in the halls.
Yeah, I think that one has very difficult finding septic system site within that lot. Uh, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And it's, um. We've had people come in and try to build there, but been denied because of ability to find a, a septic site.
Okay. Okay. The only other one would be back on the Bassers Oak Grove. Number forty-seven is also. Vacant on our, on this map here, it's thirty-seven, but on our list it's forty-seven. That one's probably a little bit of a different situation because it does have a driveway. But there's no property there. There's no building there.
I'm sorry, forty-seven, but you said thirty-seven?
Well, forty-seven on our list, it's thirty-seven on this map.
Okay. Forty-seven though is, has a name to it.
It does, but it's not an occupied property. But it does have a driveway. It was occupied at one, one time. I think it had a. Mobile home or something on it.
Yeah, it's Tom Becker's old house. And it was taken or forfeited when it went to prison because it blew itself off, took a mess in the back of it.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So are we going to get the thousand dollars out of them then or?
That is deemed as buildable and covered in floods every year because when Sally went there, dug it out, I was probably three or four years old. Trying to make trenches so her house would flood. And they filled her on everything and she ended up having to move and just let it go.
So I don't know if, if we want to keep these two on there, I, but I just want to make sure we're being consistent with the other ones that are being excluded.
But if it has a driveway, I'm, I'm going to look to Adam and to Dan on this one. If it has a driveway, then it is a lot. So somebody could buy the property. I mean, this, just because the gentleman is.
Correct.
Not occupying it currently.
Mayor, it's a lot of record that looks buildable just from the aerial photograph. No reason that somebody couldn't acquire it and build a house on it. So it does benefit from the street being proved.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we know the history, though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's from the property record.
All right, anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, like to make a motion. Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-seven, adopting an assessment.
There's second.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Tina. Certainly discussion.
Metamare.
Yes, Ryan.
In the state of Minnesota, special assessments need to pass a three-prong test in order to be considered valid. All three prongs must be satisfied. In the opinion of this council member, using special assessments for road reconstruction fails two of these three prongs. Number one, the property being assessed must be receiving a special benefit. As these are public roads and anyone can use them, they benefit everyone. If we were to remove any particular property from this list. Um, as we have done, the road in front of their house would still be constructed. Number two, the amount being assessed must not exceed the increase in value that a property receives as a result of the work being done. It is my observation that redoing the road in front of your house does not increase your property value. This has also been said by other members of this council from the DAAS. When we look back at properties that have had road, the road in front of their house reconstructed, the value of their home does not increase relative to the homes. That have had, that did not have reconstructed roadways. The third prong is that all properties assessed within the same class must all be treated the same, and I believe it is clear we are doing that. In order to charge special assessments, state law requires that we have to send out multiple notices, hold hearings. Have our attorney review documents, have staff prepare reports. These things cost taxpayers money. And an internal analysis by our finance department shows that in all likelihood, the act of charging special assessments. Costs the taxpayers more money than if we had just used the general tax levy. This council is choosing to increase the tax burden on our residents for no reason. Uh, on another item tonight, uh, we have an assessment roll for a list of delinquent utility bills. That list has gone up thirty-six percent since last year. That is a strong indicator that people are facing economic difficulties. Of the properties being assessed, twenty-six of them, roughly eighteen, will have their city property taxes, uh, eighteen percent, sorry, will have their city property taxes more than double as a result of this action. I cannot in good conscience support that and I will be voting no on this.
Dave, can you comment on process and the procedure? Of this, this evening?
Well, Mayor, I can just tell you that. Appraisers do find benefit for a road reconstruction project. Um, the typical example is if you're in the market for a house and you have two identical houses, one on a brand new road. And one on a pothole, old road, which one would you want? You'd want the one on the new road. So that indicates there's market benefit to having a new road. As far as. Characterization of a tax increase, a special assessment is not a property tax. They're two separate categories. Special assessment is collected with property taxes, but it is not an increase to the property taxes.
Thank you. All right, is there any more comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right, moving on to item four point two, proposed assessment role of unpaid special charges. And we'll turn this over to our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a public hearing to consider assessment of unpaid special charges under Minnesota statutes. Four twenty-nine point one zero one. Uh, this is related to code enforcement. Uh, for citations that haven't been paid in accordance with the provisions of the city code. Uh, just to review briefly, the process the city follows for code enforcement is based on campaign complaints. Uh, city staff does not actively search out, uh, or seek to prosecute violations of the city code. Uh, we only react, uh, when such issues become to the point where someone has raised it to the city's attention. Then it becomes basically the city. Uh, looking to review the matter with the property owner, uh, with the intent of gaining compliance. All the complaints that the city receives are anonymous. Uh, again, it's a city versus property owner situation. Uh, that doesn't necessarily include the complainant. Uh, we can track these complaints via permit work software. Uh, with the administrative special assistant in our office. Uh, the process that we follow involves five steps. Uh, the first is that we, upon receipt of a complaint, either via phone call, email. Uh, or the website, uh, will inspect the property from the street or the adjacent property with their permission. Uh, to see if there is in fact violation, uh, we'll photograph that if, uh, it's available. Uh, if there's any illegal construction involved with this situation, that work that would otherwise require a building permit, the building department can. Uh, issue a stop work order at that point so that there's opportunity to review it. Uh, but otherwise, if there is no violation, we close the record and make note in the file. Uh, if we do find a violation, what we do is send a step one letter, uh, basically advising the property owner that we believe a violation exists. Uh, and request that they contact city staff. Our letter outlines what we believe the violation is, what would be necessary to correct the violation. Uh, it doesn't mention at this point anything regarding penalties or enforcement. This is advisory and welcoming contact with city staff so that we can try and. Uh, resolve any issue, uh, amicably between the city and the property owner. They have ten days in which to contact city staff, uh, to follow up on this matter. Uh, if they do and we can resolve it, we'll close it. Otherwise, we'll move to the next step, which is to. Uh, re-inspect the property to determine if the violation is continuing. And we'll document that as necessary and we'll attempt to contact the property owner. Uh, we then, if the violation is continuing, issue an administrative notice, which is a template form. Again, states the nature of the violation, the specific city code that is, uh, being cited and then outlines the potential penalties involved if. Uh, the problem is not abated. Again, we're welcoming the opportunity to talk to the property owner within ten days. Uh, to try and resolve this without any further enforcement action. Uh, and again, if the violation has been corrected and they never contacted staff, obviously we close the matter. Uh, if we still haven't resolved it, we move to the next step. Uh, if the violation is continuing, again, inspecting the property and documenting the situation, attempting to contact the property owner. Uh, and if it is in fact continuing, issue a citation, which again outlines the violation in the city code, this time imposing a two hundred dollar. Administrative fine, uh, for violation. We can issue additional citations basically each day that the violation continues, but we don't do so. We basically go at that point to a two-week cycle of inspecting the property and. With the expectation that at some point the property owner is going to contact us and work with us, uh, to resolve this matter. Uh, again, if it's been resolved, we close it. Uh, if we've issued a citation, the property owner does need to respond within fifteen days. Uh, we will try and, uh, resolve the matter with them. They do have the right to appeal. The citation to argue their case before an independent hearing officer that there is no violation of the city code. We, if it goes to the hearing, uh. The property owner has the opportunity to present their information. City staff would present its side of the. Information, including documentation and the city code references. At that point, the hearing officer can either dismiss the complaint, extend the time to resolve it, or uphold the citation. Our practice has been to work with property owners, uh, after a citation has been issued to resolve the issue. If it's done so in a timely manner, staff will administratively waive the citation and move on. Uh, satisfied that the corrections have been made. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is for unresolved or unpaid citations. That were previously issued during twenty twenty-four. For these applications, the appeals period has lapsed. Uh, so the property owner has been noticed of the proposed assessment hearing, uh, that's being. Uh, so the property owner has been noticed of the proposed assessment hearing, uh, that's being connected tonight. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is not to discuss whether or not a violation occurred or whether, uh, the hearing is or the citation was justified. Again, that process is closed at this point. Uh, so the proposed assessment would include the administrative fines, uh, which is a minimum two hundred dollars per citation. There's also, uh, any costs that have been incurred by the city for abatement, such as if the pro- city had to mow the property for long grass, et cetera. Uh, and then there's an administrative fee charged for assessment of the unpaid fines to the tax rolls to be paid over. The proposed assessment roles, uh, were noticed to the the property owners. Uh, they had until October fourth to pay the unpaid citations by, uh, without incurring the administrative fee. Uh, if the council adopts the assessment role this evening, they have until November fifteenth to pay the unpaid citations without interest. Otherwise, those assessments would be, uh, certified to the county and paid over like property taxes, uh, in twenty twenty five with the four point four percent interest. Uh, we have had contact with the last property owner on the assessment role, uh, at one zero four seven zero Kaler Avenue. Uh, have reached an agreement on when they will abate their violation. They also have an additional outstanding citation that's not on the assessment role, so. That action prompted them to, again, contact city staff and offer to comply with the provisions of the city code, uh, as requested in the few citations. Uh, and so city staff would be agreeable to removing that from the assessment role. City staff's recommendation is that the assessment role be approved, uh, following the conduct of the public hearing. Uh, there's the possible action to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash seventy eight, uh, which would be amended to remove, uh, the reference property.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will open the public hearing. This is the portion where you can come to the podium, and this is regarding the proposed assessment role of unpaid special charges. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak? I'll ask again if you have anyone that would like to speak regarding the unpaid special assessment. One more time, if anyone would like to speak. Okay, we'll bring this back up to council for discussion and adoption. Council, questions?
And Mayor, I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash seventy eight, adopting an assessment for unpaid special charges.
Second.
And just for clarification, that's with removing the bottom.
Correct, removing the bottom, um, residence.
Okay. Are you good with that?
And yes, and second.
And Audrey, you have that loaded. All right. Right, motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item five point one, Atsigo Waterfront District. Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, modern construction in Minnesota had submitted a P U D development stage application and preliminary plat for development of property east of highway one oh one at County Road thirty nine. Uh, that application had proceeded through the planning commission and came to the city council at your meeting on June twenty second of this year. Uh, the application involved development of the site with a hundred and fifty multiple family dwelling building that included also retail office and restaurant space as part of a mixed-use concept. Uh, with the application, they were proposing to subdivide the property, uh, with a preliminary plat. Uh, the council denied the application at your meeting in June, uh, based on um, findings that, uh, didn't concur with the proposed building height, the floor area, the dwelling units not complying with the zoning ordinance and uh, the provision of adequate off-street parking on the site. Uh, the zoning ordinance provides that once an application has been denied by the council, it cannot be resubmitted for one year from the date of that action. Uh, there are exceptions provided by the zoning ordinance, uh, first being that the applicant could have withdrawn the, uh, request before the council voted to deny it. So thus, council hadn't acted on it at that point. Uh, second, the council can agree by a four-fifths vote to reconsider the application if you make a determination that the circumstances surrounding the application have changed, uh, to warrant reconsideration. Uh, modern construction in Minnesota is requesting reconsideration of the application. You know, approved by the city council, this would proceed forward, basically submitting a new application that would go to the planning commission uh, for public hearing and then come to the council for a final decision. Uh, the applicant's proposing that they would revise their plans at final plat, uh, to address the change in circumstances that they're offering, uh, to have reconsidered. Uh, and those being that the building plans would be revised to reduce the height of the structure to five stories above parking. Uh, that would be a six-story building down from the seven-story building it is today, uh, with the flat roof that would make it approximately the same height as Guardian Angels. Uh, the building plans would be revised such the floor area of each individual dwelling unit complied with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then the site plan would be revised to comply with the off-street parking requirements as determined by the zoning administrator. Uh, we did ta- discussed during the application that as a mixed-use development, there's an offset in the peak hours of parking between the various uses. So you can't use just the straight calculations by the zoning ordinance. Uh, and the discussion with the initial application was what should that number of stalls be uh, on the site to ensure adequate parking for that first phase development? So, uh, the developer would agree to, uh, the recommendations of city staff in that regard. So the possible action for the city council this evening is to vote to reconsider, uh, the P U D development stage application and preliminary plat for Atsigo Waterfront District based on the chain circumstances. Uh, the applicant Jesse Hartung is here to address the council. And again, just a reminder, this does require a four-fifths vote of the council.
Does the applicant wish to comment?
Good evening, everybody. Jesse Hartung, uh, Ogden Street, Elk River, Minnesota. I think Dan summarized it pretty well. Um, you know, invested a lot of time and effort into this project that I was, uh, you know, a little shocked. I think it was clear I was shocked. It was it was denied, but, um, in order to try to make this work for the community, um, we've got to make some changes. And so, uh, we're going to make those changes and hope that we don't have to wait a year to resubmit. So tonight I asked for at least four of you guys to, uh, agree to the changes and, uh, look forward to hopefully making this project happen next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council. So Dan, I have a question on this. Um, obviously reading his email to us, it talks about him addressing the items that I had concerns with. I'll speak just for myself. Um, this means I will go through the planning process again.
Correct. This is essentially an entire new application. The prior application was denied. So this is starting from step one, moving forward again.
Okay, so what, I guess, I mean, just looking at email, it sounds great, but I'm just, I guess, reiterating to Mr. Hartung to make sure that when this comes to the planning commission and to the city council, it's complete. Um, I think there was a lot of gray areas that we felt, even though you gave us your word, we wanted to make sure that it's on it's on paper. So and that we can see it. So that would be my comment to it.
Mayor.
Counsel.
Can I sort of piggyback on that?
Mm-hmm.
Am I understanding correctly that the that the changes that are being proposed here wouldn't show up until the final plat?
Madam Mayor, that's the applicant's proposal that essentially the additional conditions of approval as written on the screen would be imposed on the current plans that were or the previous plans that were submitted. So the applicant wouldn't revise their his plans in resubmitting this. He would submit these plans and they would add these three conditions.
And I guess what I'm saying to, so that's what Ryan's piggybacking on is that it should come to us prepared. Um, done. I I think that that's where we struggle with that. And, you know, I know Mr. Hartung may say you've put a lot of money into it, but it seems as though those plans were never complete or what we expected. Um, and again, I'm speaking for myself, so I I don't know if Ryan's agreeing with it.
I would concur with that, yeah.
And I would as well.
Sure. No, go ahead, council member.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, I think having the submitted revised plans prior to a final plat would be important for, I think, council, planning commissioner, everyone.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just voice my concerns and be a little blunt, right? I mean, it it was approved by planning commission, right? We worked with city staff. You guys have experts here. Um, they understood it. It's one hundred percent common. I've seen a million of these things from everybody from Costco to little companies that there's conditions of approval, right? Now, you guys denied it and said you didn't like the building height. You said you wanted to see parking. And you said you wanted to see those units either renamed or changed in size. So I'm saying, okay, let's do that. I don't think it's a big ask. I think everybody's intelligent here and can understand that. If I say I'm going to do that and submit that with final plat, how is that any different than any other plat that comes to you guys that's approved with conditions, right? These conditions, if anything, have been, you know, pretty cut and dry. So, um, I fail to see the logic in that. I think it's onerous and I think it's um, doesn't give me a lot of conviction that this was approved one time already, right? So now I go spend another ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in how much time to bring it back? And then there's another concern? So yeah, my request is that it it's three conditions. City staff understands it. Planning commission already approved this unanimously. Um, previous councils have approved this, and, uh, I don't think it's that hard. I think we're asking for some that's pretty common. But again, it's just a request. It's up to you guys and we'll see where it goes. But I I do humbly ask for approval on this tonight, and I don't think I'm on a line. You can talk to the city attorney. You know, talk to members of the community. I sat in on some of the stuff with you, Mayor. I mean, it it makes zero sense unless there's something else going on behind the scenes. You know, that's driving the disconnect between planning commission, city staff, and the community and you guys. I'd love to know what that is, but you you said why you wanted it denied. We said, let's correct those. Submit them with a final plat so we don't have to waste more time, potentially push this into twenty twenty six or just walk away from the project and put the land up for sale. So it it's not a big ask. Thank you.
Comments from staff on that?
Mayor, it's the council's discretion to ask for the the plans if you want to see them. The city does approve things on condition as a routine matter, uh, but obviously the concerns raised during the previous review, uh, and the application even prior to that, uh, you know, we basically put in these approvals that what is being approved is the plan submitted to the city subject to these conditions. So we try and be as explicit as possible. If the council wants comfort and assurance as to what's being approved, that's what the plans demonstrate most clearly.
Just a quick question. The, one of the items on the building height. Am am I understanding correctly that even reducing it one more level still won't be in compliance with the zoning regulations?
So Mayor, the zoning ordinance would currently limit structures to three. By conditional use permit, the city has approved four-story buildings, three above parking. Uh, Guardian Angels is a four-story building, and then the pitch roof puts it up to basically a fifth story in height.
So this would be
when it's a conditional use permit, it's not necessarily a variance. It's an ex- it's an allowed exception that the applicant has demonstrated that they can increase the height of the building over the specifications of the zoning ordinance without causing negative effect to surrounding properties.
Right.
And as a a matter of clarification, so, you know, we can we can click, we can easily update the plans to say studios instead of one-bedroom. I mean, that's that piece. The parking's already been submitted. The engineering's been done. So the the three hundred and eighteen number that came up previously was a number guided by planning commission, um, in a discussion with those guys, productive discussion. Um, so the parking's there. So what you guys are asking is for me to update the floor, which, you know, takes a lot of work. I mean, there's fire exits, there's elevations, um, a lot of stuff involved to and a lot of time to drop the floor one level. I think as a point of clarification, every other piece of that is, you know, it's it's there. So I think we can all imagine what it looks like with one less story. Thank you.
Also, comments?
I I'm I'm, I guess I'm having a little bit of trouble with that because it seems to me like we would need the plan at some point anyway. And I and I certainly don't want to incur, you know, have someone have to go through a process, and then we get all the way there and then it's we're still right where we are. So to me, I think we have to, we have to look at the plan that's in front of us. And it sounds to me like we might still be off on the building height, and I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to cause someone to have to pay a whole bunch of money, and then we're still not within the restriction or within the zoning ordinance. So I, Mayor, I don't know if you would, um, if this would be a possible solution, but it sounds to me like if we deny this, it puts them in a whole another year of waiting.
Mayor, if the council doesn't approve reconsidering the application, they can't resubmit the same application until June twenty second, twenty-third of next year.
If we decided instead to not make a decision on this, could they reapply for the reapplication?
Without altering their application? No, they can't. They need the council to
To approve that.
To approve reconsidering the request.
Even though the scope that he's presenting changes enough, but he would still have to I guess I'm strug- I mean, again, I appreciate the email, but we usually see things and and I can agree with you that we put conditions on on things. So I I'm not, I agree with you on that, Jesse, but it just doesn't look like we should be actually seeing what your product is. I I'm struggling with that. So I, and counsel, again, I'm speaking for myself, but that, you know, again, you can show us your parking because we saw it on the map and you said, I'm not going to do this, but now you're saying you'll do it. So the building's going to have to be drawn either way, correct? If you're going to build it or not. So is 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 that, I mean?
It would get drawn prior to final plat approval. There's a lot of steps between now and then, including finishing finishing up some regulatory stuff, engineering stuff, uh, finishing up financing pieces of all that. Um, the financing can't go forward until preliminary plat is is approved. Um, so, you know, I have the option of saying, okay, let's potentially spend three or four more months trying to get these plans updated, brought back to you guys, hope for approval, and again, tens of thousands of dollars, um, which may not come. And I have and I have very little confidence at this point it would come. Uh, so what I'm asking is put the conditions on there, um, that meet what you guys want to see. Let me continue to move forward on the other pieces of the puzzle that have to fall into place so that when we do come back with final set of plans, you know, that includes the revised height, which includes different parking. I mean, all this stuff is a lot of work that's involved behind the scenes. Um, you know, I can do all that work with the confidence knowing that A, preliminary plat's approved, B, financing's in place. So when we come back to you guys, it's ready to rock and roll and start.
I guess to me, I'm looking at the cart horse thing. It's it and you see it differently than I think we see it, or I again, I will speak for myself. We want you to be successful. We want there to be a good product there. I I guess I'm struggling with the fact of why, why wouldn't you just do the plans, have it in there? Then there's not an option for you, us to say, we're going to add these three conditions with
Well, Ryan right now, Ryan just now raised concerns that whether or not he would approve it. He just said, I think we're still up. He doesn't understand this is a conditional use. You're clueless. I'm sorry, Ryan, but it's not outside of
Not the first time someone's told you that.
I mean, it's a conditional use. So right there is the reason we spend another twenty thousand dollars in four months to come back for Ryan to say, I, yeah, we're just not there yet. We need to go another story. Right? I mean, it's absolutely insane. So I can fight this battle in public. I can sell the land and move on, or we can all work together and build something amazing for this community.
I I think in my defense, that's why I would like to see plans instead of a couple of words on a piece of paper, right?
Words are legal documents, Ryan, that are upheld by by your guys' lawyers.
I I mean, an email.
It's not an email. This is a proposal you're voting on. It's conditions of a plat. It would be, it would be a resolution. I wouldn't, you you're not approving, uh, higher building. You know, I mean, this is what is insane to me. Why is it that I can understand this and that other people can understand this, but there's some major disconnect up there with city council? And and Tina, just for the record, you know, it hurt my feelings last time when you said, I'm not committed to this community. I mean, do you remember saying that?
I do.
Yeah. And do you still believe that? How much money have you spent on this community? Huh? How many building, how many businesses have you built in this community?
None.
How many houses have you put into this? How much money you made out of the building to build? I've actually lost money on some of them for my clients.
Okay, we're going to keep it.
So keep it here. Keep it up front to council, please.
Madam Mayor. Yes, Brittany.
I guess, Dan, I guess I'm I'm looking maybe to your, Dave, uh, traditionally Traditionally, you. Would we ever approve something or move forward to something? Without having the exact plans in front of us as to what something would potentially look like when they are done. I'm asking because, the reason why is because again, legality reasons, I think. You, we, you, we can have a conversation and we could say, yes, we're gonna decrease the height of the building. We're going to. Have parking. We're gonna change the name of the, the wording of the apartments. If you do all of that and you decrease the size of the height of the building. Does anything happen to? Do that coffee shop or the lobby, or there are other changes? That are going to substantially change that you're building, what you are putting. The design of what you've already presented to us.
Well, we're losing the top floor.
Sold out apartments.
Correct.
And.
The plaza's all the same. The proposal is to lose the top floor. So the, the apartments and rooftop amenities have to go. There's no, there's no space or height for them.
I just ask because again, I don't want you, I, I think that, at least I can agree with Madam Mayor that. I do think that it would be wonderful if you were successful here. It's not. But I don't want you to come back and then there's all these other changes and let's say, I'm not here and whoever's not here and then you're gonna pickle up. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I love that.
Believe it or not, I'm trying to actually.
Brittany, I appreciate that, but we, we had, you know, we had concept plan approved. We had the project actually approved previously under a bigger massing and a taller building. It expired and then it came back and was denied, so I actually 100% understand that. You know? What you're saying you're trying to prevent, you guys have actually already done to me, so.
But for clarification on that too, that expired and that wasn't our fault on that. That was.
I'm well aware, Mayor. I've worked with a lot of cities, Mayor. I'm well aware that typically a letter gets sent out, hey, are you planning to move forward with this? You know, but I agree, and that's why I've submitted another $10,000 application and.
I want that noted because we have residents here, so it doesn't, I don't want to make it look like we're not being. Helpful to developers. You let that timeframe expire. So, which is why you had to start again and come back. So. All right, other comments. Dan, can you give me an example on if we've? I mean, I'm struggling on this one to see if we face this same scenario ever.
Mayor, not concerning floors of buildings, but like I said, we do with. Conditions on a regular basis requiring, you know, alteration of plat layouts, et cetera, that ultimately do come back through final plat. Bottom line is it's what's the city council's comfort level in reviewing this, re-reviewing this application. Do you need to see the plans to feel comfortable when it comes back to the council to vote? Or. Do you leave it to staff and the developer to resolve by the time final plat comes back?
I think it'd be in everybody's best interest to have all the plans. You have your adjustments and your builders and your money decided. The council has everything or then his plans go through Planning Commission to make sure everything is met. And then it comes all that satisfied, then comes to council. I think. He should have his plans.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
What do you need us to formally do?
Mayor, my suggestion would be to. Since we don't have that in writing, I would actually still make the motion to reconsider it, then vote if it fails by four to five. By less than four positive votes, that's fine.
Yeah, so I think the record should probably be clear that the applicant did walk out of the room and say he was drawing it, but I also agree with Dan that. There should be a vote. That was not in writing. I don't know if it'd be binding or not, but there should, so there should be a vote on his application to. Have it reconsidered.
So if we do a possible motion. What, we motion through what it says and do we deny this motion or do we?
If you don't support the motion, vote no.
Okay.
Then you wouldn't make a motion in favor. Council comments, otherwise a motion.
Would we be able to make a motion rejecting the consideration?
Was that what we did last time? And then for our.
The last time you, you motioned in the positive and then. All five voted against it.
So let me, let me try to wordsmith this, see if, see if this makes sense. Motion to reject allowing reconsideration of zoning subdivision application by Modern Construction of Minnesota, Inc. For Atsigo Waterfront District. Based on the determination that the circumstances surrounding the previous application have not changed significantly.
Second.
A motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Um, this is a legal one for you, Dave. Since we don't have it in writing, we are making the motion. There's a second. We have that on the floor right now. What options? Does the developer have on this?
Well, I was thinking about that question as you're holding that discussion. I, I think the question would be. If he were to resubmit something else. I mean, this, I think, was basically resubmission of the same thing. If he were to resubmit something else, the question would become whether there was a substantial enough change for that to be treated as a new application or whether it would be. The same as the one you just heard. If it was substantial enough to be different, I think it could be treated as a new application.
So with him having scans and specs of it being drawn up and being. The lower floor, so again, this is just an email that we received.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I couldn't comment for sure until I see what he was to submit.
Okay.
And I, I get that he probably doesn't like that answer, but. If it was substantially different from the previous application, it could be considered as a new application.
And so, and sorry, then he would be able to do that before the June 22nd. Otherwise, June 22nd, he can just submit. For a new application, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that's essentially why I asked the question because who knows what he's changing and then you're, you know, is this gonna be considered a new? Project? What, what, what will we have in front of us? So.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? This is a unique. One for us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to item 6.1. I had told this is from item 3.4. On the second page.
Yeah, Mayor.
You have. Items five and six are the same, but they're not combined, so I just.
It is the same property, same address, same.
Okay.
Place a lien on the property.
Yep. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure if there was an error clerically, if we needed to combine those. My. When I was scanning, when I was scanning all the thing and making sure I, they were the same name, same address. Okay, well, then there is not an error. Thank you for making that clear to me why we have two for the same address. If there's no other questions on that, then I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-71. Adopting an assessment for delinquent utility bills. Second. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we are still on city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor, I mean, we could talk about the pumpkin patch on.
Yeah.
On Saturday. That was, that was a good turnout. We had a lot of kiddos come through. The weather was a little rainy in the morning.
Yep.
A little chilly, but everyone seemed to have fun and. All the parents were very grateful and.
Yeah, it was a great event with the weird weather this year, the pumpkins. We were a little concerned what we were gonna get, but the pumpkins were great. We actually had a local resident bring up. Three tractors, so that was a new. Kind of fun amenity for the kids. You let them climb on them.
Honk, lots of.
And lots of honking of the horns of the tractors. But yeah, parking box staff did a great job. Lots of families, lots of good compliments, so. And yeah, Mother Nature has decided to only rain on like our two events, the festival morning and then pumpkin patch, so. I don't know if you guys talked to Maddie when you walked in, but she said if you wanted to rain, just come talk to staff, the landscaping for a day and then it'll rain for us, so. But yeah, please pass along to them that they did a really great job. All right, anyone else have anything? All right. Staff reports and updates, item 7.1. Consider scheduling a special meeting. For review of utility fund budgets.
Yes, Mayor, council staff requests the 5:30 PM. Monday, October 28th. The drinking water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
All right, then I will call for. Scheduling a special meeting for October 28th at 5:30. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I, actually, Mayor, I will not be here.
Audrey, can you have that noted? If you have any questions, contact staff whenever time, please. Yes. We are still on staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have any updates.
Okay, Adam.
Mayor, not to me.
Audra.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know that absentee balloting is. Very busy at City Hall and on Friday we start direct balloting. And that's where residents can come in and put their ballot directly into the ballot counter. So that's the 18 days before the election, so just be. Aware that they can come in and vote without an envelope.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Oh, apologize. And then the photo contest winners will be here at the next meeting.
Great, great. Okay. Dave.
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, excuse me, Dan.
Mayor, no update.
Ron.
Uh, just wanted to go through the projects again. Development projects are going well because of the weather. It's been. Very good for those projects, especially in the clay. Zocman Meadows, Meadows of Atsigo and Tanglewood are all going at the same time here. We have the Atsigo Creek Restoration Project set to start fairly soon. The directional drill for well number 11, raw water main, that's well underway and almost complete. And then in the near future, while the Queens have a new storm pond. Storm sewer directional drill. Happen, that will just take a couple of days, but. In the near future.
We saw the road closed sign sitting on the side of 75th and Odine.
Yes. So they're gonna make that water main crossing across 75th Street and that should take about a day and it'll be reopened.
Okay.
So there'll be the detour signs asking people to use Odine 85th and then back down page to get to the same location that they were at.
Okay.
And when is that? When?
That's 75th Street north of Meadows, so.
She's asking.
When will they do that?
They, they made the. Connection today with the valve, which kept the couple properties online. So they're gonna start working on it tomorrow.
Okay, so road will be closed as of tomorrow?
Yeah, for a day or two.
Okay.
And then it'll be back to gravel, but hopefully they'll get. Payment curbing in fairly quickly here before of course the season. Construction is over.
Sure. Perfect, okay. Ray County.
Evening. Just two points I kind of wanted to touch on. That's been kind of happening in the past couple of weeks. One. Kind of a PSA, we've had two incidents of. Signs being stolen for political purpose, from political signs being stolen. They seem to have been all around Parish. And in that 95th circle kind of area along there to the park. So, just ask and remind the citizens that. That is theft. And is, you know, please respect people's property and freedom of speech, so. And the second thing is past couple of weeks. Homecoming, I guess, was happening, so there's some teeping issues in. Two of those incidents, we did catch some of the juveniles, so there was. Consequences for that, so. Until the next game or whatever.
I, I think it's just, well, I think it's a homecoming thing. It is, so.
Until the next event. What is that? The Winter Dance or?
Yeah, we had it done.
Hey, other than that, everything's kind of business as usual. Any other comments or questions or concerns?
Anyone have anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if no one has anything else, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending this evening.